Good evening, everyone. We have a few folks we need to remember tonight. As I unmute. So, good evening. We have a few folks to remember tonight. First, we have Theodore William Van Nal of Newburyport. He was a chairman of the Newburyport Transportation Commission, was a volunteer throughout the community YMCA library. I think he is special to us for his being the chair of the Greater Newburyport Bureau Alliance, which is the sister city organization connecting Newburyport with Borough of Kenya. Another person to remember is Kenneth Beaton. He is a Newburyporter, graduated from Newburyport High School in the class of 60 where he's met his wife Ginger. While in graduation, he worked in several jobs, but he came to Newburyport joining the Newburyport Police Department where he was an inspector for many years. He and his wife Ginger enjoyed years traveling through all 50 states as well as England, Ireland, and throughout Europe. Lifetime member of the Knights of Columbus, fourth degree. Another person to remember is Gillian Chatfield, a lifelong learner, born in Wales. She worked throughout the world with her job working in Europe, India, coming to the United States, to New Jersey. Finally made her way to Newburyport in 1998 with her husband David. She is special to us for her teaching in the Newburyport school system as an English-as-a-sequent language person, in addition to teaching about citizenship and literacy training. And last but not least, I had a few counselors actually call me about this person in particular. Ms. Matthews, Mary Matthews Fordham, passed away on April 7th at Port Health Care. Born in 1941 to the late Nicholas and Raffiella Matthews, she was born and raised in Newburyport and a graduate of the high school, class of 59. She continued on to her education, taking a degree in education from Bridgewater State. She married Thomas Fordham and they were married for 42 years. She started her career in Newburyport High School before becoming a history teacher at the Rupert A. Knock Middle School. While teaching at the medical school, she earned awards, including the Mullen Award, Teacher of the Year, and Master Teacher in 1985. She was highly respected among her peers and students and a lot scarier to her two sons, Nick and Tony, at school than she was at home. Teachers' kids never catch a break. She taught in the Newburyport school system for more than 35 years. One of the comments I heard from a counselor was she loved her job and she was as tough as it could get. So, let's remember these four folks and our thoughts as we take a moment of silence, please. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Jones, if you would call the roll, please.
You have to call the roll for the meeting of April 10th at 7:00 PM. Counselor Lane?
Here.
Thank you. Is remote for the record. Counselor McCauley?
Here.
Counselor Preston?
Here.
Counselor Vogel?
Present.
Counselor Wallace?
Here.
Counselor Wright?
Here.
Counselor Zied?
Here.
Counselor Cameron?
Here.
Counselor Dunneou?
Here.
Counselor Khan?
Present.
Is remote for the record. Thank you. And Counselor Shan?
Present.
We have 11 present, two remote.
All right. Late files.
We have a number of them. The first one is Communication 475, which is the Shanty Moving Plan. Communication 476 is the Ad-Hoc Market Landing Park Operations Phase Communication. Communication 477 is a letter from Patricia McGrath regarding Ordinance 129. Order 441 is with respect to the CPA Housing Rehab Reappropriation. And Order 442 is CPA Fiscal Year 24 Plum Island Beach Public Access Dune Preservation relating to the Mobi mats and sand fencing.
Motion to waive the rules and accept with the following. 475 would be a receivable file. 476 would be Community Services. 477 would be receivable file. Order 441, Order 2, Budget and Finance.
Second?
Point of order, if I may.
Could we have 475 go to license and permits?
On you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Please.
And 476 to General Government?
Thank you. All right. Any other changes? All right. Roll call on those changes.
Roll call on 475 to license and permits. 476 to General Government, a receivable file. 477 and the remaining 441, 442 to Budget and Finance.
And a waive the rules.
And a waive the rules. Thank you.
Second. If that wasn't second. Roll call.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Public comment. Those on Zoom, please raise your hand now. And as soon as Clerk Jones comes back with the sign up sheet inside, I will shut down the number of folks from the Zoom. So, right now I see Runway for Recovery is the first one. Jennifer Freeman is the second person. Is there anyone else on the Zoom that wishes to speak? Please raise your hand now. All right. So, the only two we'll have from Zoom will be Runway for Recovery and Jennifer Freeman. So, please, I'd like your name, your address, and two minutes to speak on a topic we have on the agenda. So, Runway for Recovery, I am allowing you to speak.
Hi. My name is Olivia Vogel. I'm the founder and executive director of Runway for Recovery. I live at 65 Middle Street in Newburyport, and my offices for this nonprofit are at 29 Water Street. I respectfully wanted to come and talk about an event that we hope to get approval for, that we've gone through the process of applying for a special permit, a one-day permit. It's an event to support our organization, which is a local breast cancer nonprofit. We are 501(c)(3) and we fund families whose caregiver has activated breast cancer or is currently diagnosed with stage four metastatic breast cancer. And the event that we'd like to have, we've had before in 2019 on In Street. It was a particularly event that included shopping, shopping and supporting Runway for Recovery. We heard from a local breast cancer survivor, a young mom who just completed the treatment as Newburyport resident. And this year, we're hearing from two local residents, Alyssa Christie and Shannon Epstein, who are talking about the losses that they have realized because of breast cancer. We have gotten some wonderful support from businesses, the stores that are really to stay open, are quite numerous along In Street and State Street. And we also have a lot of wonderful support from the restaurants. We're going to host a specialty drink on behalf of Runway for after-homes, end-of-shiping, shopping, and supporting. The event is called Love Locally, because our hope is to love locally on both those impacted by breast cancer and the businesses that support us. And we're really grateful for your consideration and thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Vogel. Next is Jennifer Freeman. And Jennifer, I've allowed you to speak.
Yes, hello. This is Jennifer Freeman. My address is 17 Old Tavern Lane, Amesbury, Mass. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Greater Newburyport Ovarian Cancer Awareness Group. We are applying for permits for a, our annual, oh, annual, actually, 5K run and walk, which starts and ends at Michael's Harbor side of Newburyport. The Greater Newburyport Ovarian Cancer Awareness Group supports women in our community who are in treatment and post-treatment for ovarian cancer. And with our ovarian cancer awareness group, including our two major activities, the 5K, which is the run and walk, which is the end of the month of September, and also our dancing festival, which is usually held at the R and B, and then the crowd con at the beginning of September. This year, we're going to have to alter that. But anyway, regarding the 5K, we would really appreciate another approval for our run and walk this year, as it's a tremendous activity for our community, raises a lot of awareness, and also incorporates a number of local volunteers, including high school students and volunteers from the Irish Circle Ready Club, as well as other local volunteers. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Next, we'll go to in-house, John Brown.
Hi. My name is John Brown. I live at 130 High Road in Newbury. I've been a longtime resident of Newburyport, doing business as spirit of Newburyport since 2006. I've been a local artist in this town for 17 years, and I'm here tonight to offer a word of encouragement and support on behalf of the Firehouse Art Shanty Project, being moved temporarily to the Pop-Up Park, I believe. And as a local artist, I've been blessed to be in this town and to work as an artist and photographer for many years. I've had many experiences downtown, in-street. So, when the word came out this evening to offer some support on this move from the firehouse, I really felt that I should be here to offer a little bit of support and encouragement for this move. I feel it's important. I was part of the temporary trial run with the shanties last fall at the waterfront. And after a three-year hiatus, it was, it was really good to get out amongst the town again with all the residents and tourists and the people, and felt a really great sense of community amongst the artists. And I didn't hear anything negative at all about the shanties. And I for one have been lobbying for an op market in Newburyport for many years.
Thank.
And I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you. Thank you. Next is John Moynihan.
Thank you. John Moynihan, Executive Director of the Firehouse Center for the Arts, One Market Square, Newburyport. And thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding the Newburyport Arts and Culture Shanty Program. Since 2019, the arts and culture shanties have been a hotly debated topic, from location to viability to impact on local business. I stand before you recognizing all of these conversations and hope at a later time to engage with the city and with this council on a long-term solution for the shanty program. The proposal before you tonight provides a temporary and seasonal opportunity to highlight arts and culture in our community. Additionally, the location proposed was specifically chosen to help mitigate the disruption that the Phase 1 park construction will create and provide modest beautification of an area that will otherwise be fenced off. Once this temporary permit expires, they will be transported to the boat basin on Merrimack Street for winter storage. Each year, arts and culture provide over $3 million in economic impact to our community as an economic and tourism driver that helps make Newburyport a go-to destination as opposed to a rest stop on the way to Northern points, something that I know many sitting here tonight have highlighted as a priority. If there's one thing that Newburyport doesn't lack, it's creative individuals making art. One thing it does lack is affordable space for resident creatives to showcase their wares. What the arts and culture shanties offer is this very opportunity for the many artists within our community. While it's been said that these opportunities may compete with downtown businesses, I offer the counterargument that they actually complement these businesses in the same way that venues like The Actor Studio complement the firehouse. As the saying goes, the rising tide buoys all ships. A concern has been raised about how this location may affect Yankee Homecoming, and I'm open to any collaborative conversation with those folks to see how we might be able to work together to limit any disruption to their normal operations. And in my conversations with the Permit and Licensing Committee, I worked to answer their questions regarding location, limiting impact while transporting and dropping, and was incredibly grateful for the thoughtful conversation with Counselors Khan, Lane, and Vogel. My goal and the goal of the firehouse is to provide access for local artists to have a temporary storefront to support their livelihood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right at two minutes. You must have practiced, John. Last but not least is Janet Bonneman at 8 Avon Ave. Janet?
21.
You're up. I'm already called.
Put your name on the list. You get up here.
I'm Janet Bonneman. I live at 8 Avon. I'm one of the artists that participated in the shanties almost four years ago now. It was a wonderful experience, even though we were moved to an area that wasn't quite as visible as was where they were going to be originally. I did well. I met a lot of people and made a lot of friends, got a lot of positive feedback about just having access to, to art. It's a variety of art. And so, you know, when they did not come back due to COVID, it was a disappointment. But then, when they did come back last year, I was thrilled, even more thrilled because they were moved to a more visible location. And I thought, well, this is, this is much better. And once again, it was a great experience. I got feedback from people in town as well as out of town. People out of town said that they came to Newburyport because they loved it, and it was, they often did it on a Sunday afternoon to take a drive on a beautiful day, but they didn't know that the shanties were there. So, for them, that was a plus, that they could come and see the beautiful scenery and, and also enjoy some art. And I'm very happy that, to see that their, the shanties are still there, and I'm very hopeful that this new location that was decided upon will be one that is approved, because I think it's, be a great asset to the town.
Thank you, Ms. Bonneman.
Thank you.
And that is it for public comments. So, moving right along. Mayor's comment.
Good evening. Good to see everyone. Happy spring. Just a couple of things I wanted to run by you all tonight. First, I want to thank everyone who came out for clean sweep this weekend. We had a good number of volunteers come out that spread out across the city. It was pretty chilly. I saw Ben down at Cashman, I believe. Yep. But we got a lot done, and so, you know, we'll continue to clean up the parks moving forward. But it was a great start, and I want to thank the Port Parks Alliance for, for setting that up this year. Docks are starting to go into the harbor. We started with Cashman last week, and Paul Hogg and his team, we start putting docks out on the waterfront, central waterfront here this week. And we had a good parklet meeting about a couple of weeks ago now, but with, with everyone getting on the same page as far as when the parklets will be out. Again, the goal is by May 1st, but they'll have a lot to do with the construction going on on State Street. So, we're going to start on Pleasant Street first, and then we'll move all over to State. But it looks like we should be in great shape for May 1st, start of outdoor dining downtown. Happy to report that the Plum Island dredge is done. This is not a rumor. It is actually complete. The last of the equipment left the island this week. The federal navigation channel is clear. They put a little bit, they didn't do as much sand as we thought, but it was actually enough to move it down to 77th. So, it was a little over 180,000 cubic yards of sand placed at Reservation Terrace, which added about 400 feet of beachfront, which was pretty amazing. If you haven't seen it, go down to 73rd and check it out. It's pretty neat. But then again, that's just part of, part of the solution, right? So, first, I want to thank Norfolk Dredging. We actually, a few of us were able to go out, go out on the dredge last week, and it was pretty neat to see it up close and personal. Really professional organization, and that dredge was called the Delaware. But now, a group of us had went down to Army, Army Corps Headquarters, Engineer Headquarters down in Concord, Mass., and started having that next conversation about the study on the jetty, which will, which will be picking up next. And that's the money, that $240,000, we were able to secure that through Senator Markey and Senator Warren's office. So, those conversations have started. I thought we had a pretty good productive, Senator Tar was there leading the charge as well. Pretty good first conversation, and which we're going to have many more to come, but we're definitely moving in the right direction, which is great. DPS Director, that's in your packet tonight. Wayne Amorall unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. He is literally on a train going across the country for a vacation. He decided to fly to Los Angeles, and he's taking a train all the way back in a couple days. But that's where he is right now, getting it all in before he starts on May 1st. But hopefully, you can support his appointment tonight. And just another note that we are going to be posting the deputy director position later this week. The Fire Chief Search Committee is still moving forward. They have some initial interviews scheduled for Friday. Just a recap, that we got eight applications for that, for that job. The committee reduced it down to six. Then one candidate removed its name, and so, we're going to be interviewing five candidates this weekend, and then they're going to decide if all five will move on to the assessment center. But that process is moving along. NYS at 59 Low Street. We got four responses to our RFQ. So, this is exciting. As you know, thank you again for approving the funding for the $200,000 needed to complete the full design of 59 Low Street for NYS. So, they, we had a little advisory group here at City Hall that reviewed the qualifications of the firms that submitted, and then they requested from the top firms that they rated for fee proposals. And so, we'll be announcing later this week which design firm has been picked that will get us to full design. Budget process is still moving on here at City Hall. We finished, the mayor's office and the finance office has completed all their department budget head meetings. Now, we'll begin putting those pieces together along with the CIP. The school committee will vote on their budget at the end of the month, right after your meeting on the 24th. They vote on the 25th. But we had a lot of really great conversations, and you'll see, you know, I'll start getting a little bit of information out there, but we're really focusing on a few departments in particular this year, just kind of like we did last year. We'll be looking to make some, giving some more resources to a few of those departments, and we look forward to talking to you all about that. Year two streets and sidewalks will start this week. We're excited about that. DNR is our contractor again. Some of the sidewalk work has already begun by Allied. Allied is our sidewalk contractor through June, and then that will go back out to bid. But Allied is currently working right now on Plummer, Plummer Ave., and they're doing a lot of good work down there. And just a reminder, we're going to be doing about four, over four miles worth of paving this year in year two of the streets and sidewalk plan. And some other good news to end this is that we got, we heard from FEMA on Friday that we did get approval for the final reward of the $2.25 million for the bulkhead project. This has been a lot of hoops that we've been jumping through. You know, they give you an earmark. You think they just show up with a big check, right? But it doesn't quite, quite work that way. We had to work quite a bit with FEMA, hats off to Jordi Vining and Nancy London and Teen, Andrew Levine as well for working with FEMA, and then finally getting the final approval on Friday. So, we're excited about that. And then just a couple of updates on another two projects, Market Landing Park and West End Fire Station. Those bids are due on April 26th. So, a lot of good things happening in the city.
Questions? All right. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a good meeting.
All right. Next on the agenda was a request that was put in, in January from our new senator, Senator Tar. As everyone is aware, that we all were redistricted last year, so we have new legislative representation for Newburyport. So, we have our senator and our new representative who wanted to speak to us tonight. So, I will give the floor to Senator Tar to start. I would remind Senator Tar, this is typically a 20-minute, so I, I know, shocked. So, I will put my timer on.
Well, Madam President, thank you for such a warm welcome. I'm a state council. Delightful to be here with you tonight. I suspect that somewhere in front of you on that deus is a timer, and you will be watching it accordingly. Very good. I suspect the clerk will also be measuring the time as well. But I did request to come before you so that I could officially have a chance to introduce myself to all of you. And Representative Shan also agreed that she thought that would be a good idea, and hence our presence here tonight. It's a little bit later than we had anticipated that we might be able to come before you. Things have been very busy, and we apologize for that. But nonetheless, we thought it was appropriate to be able to come again and officially introduce ourselves, knowing that we have worked with and known many of you for a significant amount of time. And the most important part of our message here tonight is that we are here to say two things. Number one, we are working in partnership to be able to represent the best interests of the city. And number two, we look forward to having that partnership with all of you and the mayor as well. We've already began discussions on a number of subjects. You heard the mayor give you an update relative to the dredging project, which is now completed, which was a tremendous collaborative effort to be able to get that sand out of the channel and onto the beach. And as you also heard him mention, we're working on the next phase of that project because the sand is sacrificial. It buys us time to create a more lasting solution, and the conversation around that more lasting solution is ongoing, and it began in earnest last week at the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in Concord. So, as we move forward, we wanted to let you know that we are in the midst of developing our budget for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the coming fiscal year, just as you are working to develop your budget. And that budget comes in the context of continuing robust revenue returns for the Commonwealth. We are exceeding our benchmarks by a considerable amount of money year to date. We expect that that will continue, but April is a very barometric month, as you might imagine, for tax collections. And so, we'll all be watching that very carefully, but it appears right now that we are on pace for the current fiscal year to have another significant state surplus, which will give us the opportunity to maybe fund some additional priorities beyond the current budget. And we look forward to having that discussion with all of you and with the administration. In addition to that, the House is very much in the midst of developing its budget. Representative Shan and her colleagues have until Friday at 5:00 PM to submit amendments. So, I suspect that many of you may have some ideas for those things, and I'm not trying to create more work for her. But after that, the House will debate the budget very shortly in April, and after that, the Senate will take it up in May, and we will similarly be requesting of you your thoughts. The mayor has been very good at communicating with us about budget priorities for the city, and we intend to have another conversation this week about how we can ensure that Newburyport's best interests are represented in the state budget, both of the Senate and of the House. The one thing I would touch on is that the relatively prosperous times that we find ourselves in, in terms of revenue collection, also translates in the ability to fund some major priorities. So, the governor filed her House 1 budget in, on March 1st, and in that budget, because of the prediction that we have that we're going to continue to have substantial tax revenue, there is over a $600 million increase for Chapter 70, which is the principal way by which we assist local school districts in paying for education. Now, of that $600 million, we oftentimes are frustrated because it flows through a formula, and that formula oftentimes is not nearly as advantageous as it could be for suburban school districts like this one. However, there is some good news in the governor's House 1 budget proposal because of enrollment changes primarily. In the House 1 proposal that the governor has offered, Newburyport's Chapter 70 would be increased by about $950,000, which is fairly significant. In addition to that, there is another account called unrestricted general government aid, which is affectionately referred to as UGA. And UGA is increased in the governor's budget by about $24 million, increasing Newburyport's allocation by about $60,000 on top of what we already provide, which can be used for primarily every other expense that the city has other than education. So, right now, we're on a very positive trend relative to being able to fund our budget priorities. We will continue to work together on that. We speak, I was going to say every day, but it might be every other day at this point. But we're in, we're in regular communication, and we think that that's what everyone in the city deserves. And we intend to continue to work together in a bipartisan collaborative fashion, because beyond this city, we think that's what this country deserves. So, we'll continue to work to set that example, and very much look forward to working with all of you. The last thing I will touch on is that of all of my staff, I do have someone that focuses primarily on Newburyport, who is Kristin McDonald, who is not only an outstanding member of my legislative staff, but she's a great photographer. So, and you might notice that she almost imperceptibly relocated over there to be able to get pictures of us from the appropriate angle. So, Madam President, I haven't heard the ding yet, and so, I'm going to quit while I'm ahead. I'm told that there was a wager as to what time I would arrive tonight. I think that many people were somewhat disappointed and learned a very important lesson tonight. Don't bet against me. And so, I think I more than covered the spread, and I'm not sure if it was available on any of the new electronic platforms, but I just want to really say thank you for the opportunity to spend a few minutes with you and make sure, please, if, if you'd like to discuss anything with us, either Kristin, myself, all of our staff, we're here to work with you and do the very best we can to give you effective representation on being And so I think I more than covered the spread, and I'm not sure if it was available on any of the new electronic platforms, but I just want to really say thank you for the opportunity to spend a few minutes with you, and make sure, please, if you'd like to discuss anything with us, either Kristin, myself, all of our staff, we're here to work with you and do the very best we can to give you effective representation on Beacon Hill.
Thank you, Senator Tar.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the councilors?
I just had
Counselor Vogel.
Just the clarification, that $60,000 number, that was, that was just 60,000. I mean, I realize 60,000 is an amount of money, but in the big picture of it, it's not the biggest.
First of all, it's always good to hear from another Bruce.
Thank you.
And second of all, you currently are receiving, in that account, Bruce, $2,954,397.
So now it will be three, $450,000.
You're pretty good. But the increase that the governor's budget would call for would be $3,134,85. So it's about a $60,000 increase, which is significant, but I would not want anyone to think that we're only going to give you $60,000.
I was just listening to the increase number. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes, hi, thank you. Can you speak to anything that might be changing or coming up for Chapter 90, for any increases in that?
So I can. So the legislature just about two weeks ago, Counselor, approved our Chapter 90 legislation for this year. And as you are probably aware, we usually, and when I say usually, over the last several years, we authorize about $200 million in borrowing that can then be distributed through Chapter 90, because Chapter 90 is a program that doesn't use operating dollars, it uses borrowed dollars. And the reason for that is because roads and bridges have a lifespan, we hope, of more than five years, and so we justify them being a long-term capital expense. So one of the great challenges of Chapter 90 for the legislature has been doing it in time so that municipalities can plan on projects as the construction season begins. And I'll be candid, we have not always been as good as we could at finalizing that legislation. This year, we have. So we completed the bill. The House version of the bill was slightly different than the Senate version of the bill. We reconciled them, put them on the governor's desk, and she has signed it. And so the difference this year is that we would normally have the $200 million, that is there for the traditional formulaic distribution to cities and towns, but there's an additional $150 million that's been authorized that will be used for different things, like trying to build zero-carbon infrastructure, so grants to cities and towns and regional transit authorities like NEVA, to be able to have the infrastructure for electric buses and electric charging stations. There are a number of different categories in that additional $150 million, and with, what I'd like to be able to do is provide that information to the clerk so that he can distribute it to all of you, so you can understand what those additional categories are. So the good news, well, there's three pieces of good news here, Counselor. Number one, we got it done on time. Again, that's the theme tonight, on time.[789.32][789.32](laughter) And number two, we have fully funded the traditional $200 million, and number three, we've provided an additional $150 million for these targeted kinds of things. I will tell you, one other one was to try to get at communities that have low population levels, have not always had the resources they need for road and bridge projects because they have so few people that in the formula, they don't fare very well. So in an attempt to create some equity, there is one bucket of that $150 million additional for them. But there is good news here, and I just heard the mayor update you all that he's in the second year of the roads program that's about to begin, and we're going to do our part and make sure that you have the funding for that.
Thanks.
Beautiful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Senator Tar.
You're welcome. Thank you all very, very much. I still didn't hear the timer go off. I'm doing great.
It's a 20-minute timer, so, you know, now you've got
(inaudible)
Right, nine minutes left.[851.19][851.19](laughter)
That looks like a device I saw 30 years ago in the Congress when I testified before them.[860.32][860.32](laughter)
Color-coded.
I hate to leave time on the table, but I do want to make sure that our representative has an opportunity to address you as well. But again, I just want to say thank you, and very much look forward to working with you officially, as in so many occasions, we've worked together unofficially in the past. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Tar.
Thank you.
And now Rep. Shand.
Go get 'em.[884.25][884.25](laughter)
Thank you. I am so pleased to be here. Many of you are my friends and neighbors, and not to mention my sister.[896.25][896.25](laughter) So today at the State House, the eighth graders from Newburyport came to visit, and the Revenue Committee put its final touches on a tax package, and Ways and Means in the House put its final touches on a budget, and Maura Healey and our administration made national news on the steps of the State House as we once again proved that the state could react to extremist policy across the nation. And I share that because I want you to feel very confident about what's happening on Beacon Hill, that we are capable of moving very quickly in the face of urgent need, and that we move deliberately, and that we are doing great things. It is an honor to be there, and it is an honor to have Senator Tar as a partner in this endeavor. Thursday marks 100 days in office for me. It has been exceptionally exciting. I got to go on a dredge. I did not think I would be on a dredge, but I'm sure many other adventures await us. But again, we're here to talk about how do we become partners in policymaking on Beacon Hill. There are many issues that are going to be quite difficult for us moving forward, particularly on issues of equity, equity around healthcare outcomes, wage equity, and probably school funding equity. You know, Boston has an enormous concentration of wealth and power, and that's something we really struggle with on Beacon Hill, like how do we make sure that we equitably grow the entire economy of the Commonwealth? So I am looking forward to being a partner to all of you in that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
And I'll take questions too, but I'll rely on my senator to help with the details.
Any questions? Counselor Cameron.
In the, this is a question for both of you, and thank you both for being here. In the various tax packages that have, were proposed in the last administration and maybe kind of grinding towards a conclusion now, what sort of relief would there be for seniors? I'm not sure what's actually on the books now, if it's changed recently, or?
Let me just say that Wednesday, we will have the House budget. So we have the governor's budget, and that's Floor One. And then the House comes out on Wednesday, and then Thursday, the House will be debating the tax package. I'm going to let Senator Tar speak to the circuit breaker for seniors, because that is a project that he's worked on for many, many years, and it's near and dear to his heart.
Well, thank you, and thank you for asking a question about a subject that's near and dear to my heart. So just to recap, at the end of the last session, there was a legislative package that was adopted by the House and by the Senate. They had many common elements, but they were not exactly the same, and they failed to make it to the governor's desk by the end of the session. Governor Healey had proposed, coterminously with her filing of the budget, a very similar package. And so the most important thing that would touch seniors is the issue of the senior citizen circuit breaker, which deals with the issue of property taxes, and specifically property taxes which exceed 10% of a senior's income. The important thing about this, and I want to stress this because we're still in tax season and people can still file the taxes, that program exists now, but the issue is the cap, which would roughly double in the package that's coming forward. But the important thing is, a lot of folks will say to us, I don't file, I don't pay taxes, so that credit doesn't do me any good. It's a refundable tax credit. So if you file and you're eligible, you will actually get a check back, even if you don't have tax liability that covers the amount of the credit. So that's number one. Number two, and again, it's, some things touch seniors, but they touch everybody, right? So one of the other things the governor has proposed, and we'll see what winds up being in the final package, is a reduction in the rate of taxation on short-term capital gains. Affects a lot of pensions and things of that nature. We have active trading on behalf of people that depend on that income. Number three, the estate tax. Massachusetts is an outlier among states in terms of the punitive level of taxation that we apply to estates. We had proposed in the House and the Senate, using two different methodologies, that we increase the amount from the current $1 million threshold to $2 million. The governor has proposed $3 million. My sense is we're probably going to settle back a little bit closer to the $2 million. And the other piece that's in play that's important, that again affects everyone but does affect some seniors, is the issue of the earned income tax credit, which, as we all know, affects low-wage earners. And in Massachusetts, we piggyback on the federal credit. We're currently doing 40% of it. I wouldn't be surprised if you see in the package an increase beyond that 40%.
Great, good. Thank you. Very comprehensive.
And we'll keep you posted, because this is going to be an important thing. And as Representative Shand mentioned, the way this is going to be approached is, the House and the Senate will likely debate these, well, the House definitely will, outside of the context of the budget. So there'll be a debate to resolve how much money is going to be foregone in terms of tax relief, and then the budget debate will be done without the pressure of that debate being folded into it. And I suspect the same thing's going to happen in the Senate.
Great, good, thank you.
All right. No other questions, I will say. You came in at 18 minutes, so well done.[1233.08][1233.08](laughter)
We have two minutes.[1235.08][1235.08](laughter) So I would, I'm not wanting to leave anything on the table. I would, I would point out, the mayor made reference in his update to the reconfiguration that's taking place to facilitate outdoor dining, and I would point out that the House and the Senate agreed on an extension for outdoor dining. It's an extension of about a year, so that should not be an issue. In addition, there's another measure that we enacted during the darkest days of COVID that's related, but not as popular, and that is the ability of restaurants to deliver cocktails to go. That was extended as well. But the other important, two other important things, how much time have I got left?
All right, well, I'll let you know.
Okay. I expect to see the yellow light, Richard. So two other important things, and these didn't get picked up as much in the press, although we all know that Newburyport Daily News does an incredible job of reporting what happens on Beacon Hill. But outside of that, there were two things that didn't necessarily get picked up as much in the press as they might. And this, one is important to you, Mr. Clerk, and that is, we made permanent the ability to notarize documents through remote means, through electronic means, and that was something that there was widespread agreement on in the legislature. In addition to that, we also authorized the kind of meeting that you're holding tonight, hybrid meetings with remote participation. And while we only extended that, my prediction would be that we will ultimately authorize it to be permanent. And in addition to that, and as a companion piece to that, we are seriously considering technology grants to be able to facilitate the purchase of technology so that you can conduct these kind of meetings. Obviously, you're ahead of the curve, and we have a lot of technology here tonight, but we do feel an obligation to help support that as well.
It's actually working tonight, which is not, we'll take whatever you can get us.
So I do have a question, since we are, we've got 45 seconds left. We have to do a roll call.
Yes.
Every time somebody is not present, so Counselor Con and Counselor Lane require us, since they're not present, we have to do a roll call for every vote we take. Is that something you all could look into?
We certainly could.
Thank you.
And actually, since you jogged in, we probably have now about 38 seconds left. A question was asked to us by another municipal body a few days ago about what happens if the technology fails? And we're in the middle of a meeting. What do we do at that point? And the answer that came back from the Attorney General's office was, take careful note of when that failure happened, and you can still continue with the meeting. So I just would pass that along.
Thank you. All right, and we actually have much of a 20-minute mark. So thank you very much, Senator Tar, Rep. Shand for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along to the consent agenda.
Okay. That would be consistent this evening of the approval of the minutes for March 27. There are three communications, two applications. The first application, 130, for basin apparel pop-up tents, that's to go to license and permit. The application 131 would be for the Spring Fest, June 3rd and 4th. That would also go to license and permits. And Communication 474 is going to be service. It is the Newburyport Public Art Policy. There are no transfers, and there are no appointments. The following items are coming out of the respective committees. General Government Municipal Buildings Report, License and Permits, five applications, 124, 126, 127, 128, 129. Public Works and Safety, Appointment 388, Appointment 387, Communication 465, and Ordnance 143. And that is the consent agenda this evening. Should you approve?
Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Auntie McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunham?
Yes.
Counselor Con?
Yes.
And Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Thank you. And first order is Order 440, which is the 64 Federal Street Plumber House Preservation Restriction.
Sure. Second.
Roll call.
Moving to planning and development. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunham?
Yes.
Counselor Con?
Yes.
And Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so I've heard a point of order, that last one, Obvious 132, I meant to get it correctly. I'm actually a no on that. I don't know if we need to re-vote, so.
So
I think I couldn't hear, you're very late. It's hard to hear you, but you can hear the Counselor Preston better.
Okay, I will try to speak louder. So you're a no on whether that was Ordnance 145 or 140?
132.
132, thank you.
132, thank you. That would be the second no.
Yes.
The next two orders, I believe, have already been disposed of, heading to B and F, correct? That leads us to second reading of ordinances. There are five of them. The first second reading is Ordinance 144, which is the amending Chapter 2-394 Departmental Revolving Funds.
Should we approve on second reading?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunning?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
And Council Shan?
Yes.
This is our second reading for Ordinance 132, which is mandated reporting as amended.
Should we approve on second reading?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Auntie McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunning?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Shan?
Yes.
10 yes, 1 no. Measure passes second reading. Second reading for Ordinance 145, which is amending Chapter 11-5 Rules and Regulations for Public Parks and Playgrounds.
Should we approve 145 on second reading and collectively 147 and then Districts 2-J Parks and Rec?
Second.
On second reading together.
Thank you.
Discussion? Roll call.
The motion approved 145 and Ordinance 147 collectively. Council Lane?
Give me to Council Lane.
And Council.
Point and word, I can't hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
You can't hear me? You're back. Thank you.
You can hear me now?
I can.
Okay. So the motion was to approve 145 and 147. And your answer is?
He's muted again.
Council Lane, you're muted.
Yes, thank you.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunning?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
And Council Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so I've heard a point of word that last one, Ordinance 132, I meant to guess correctly, I'm actually a no on that. I don't know if we need to re-vote, so.
So.
I think I couldn't hear, you're very vague, it's hard to hear you, but you can hear the Council President better.
Okay, I will try to speak louder. So you're a no on whether that was Ordinance 145 or 140?
132.
132, thank you.
132, thank you. That would be the second no. Maybe. Okay, so that leads us to Ordinance 140, which is the second reading for amending municipal fee schedule parking fines.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunning?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
And Council Shan?
Yes.
Next, we have Ordinance 148, which is coming in. It's amending municipal fees for recycling and solid waste.
Motion to send to Community Service collectively with 149?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Collectively, Ordinance 148, 149 to go to Community Service.
Can you put, can you read 149 for the record, please?
149 for the record, Rules for Charitable Donations. Would you like more?
No, just, I know what you mean. That's good.
Okay.
Currently, the roll call is Council Lane?
Yes.
Thank you. Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunning?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
And Council Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, committee items. Council Z.
Thank you very much. So there's no issues coming out of the committee tonight, but we did have a meeting, and I just wanted to update you really quick on a couple of, three or four things. Number one is we have our next standing meeting is Thursday, 6 o'clock here. The other reason I mention it is there are two committee of the whole items that might be of interest. We will continue with the CPC applications, and that means finishing the ones we haven't completed yet, as well as start talking about the new ones that came in tonight. Just for everybody's benefit, if you look at the last.
I'm sorry, my editing is up.
If you look at the last budget and finance meeting, you'll see minutes. On the last page, I put a summary table of where we are on the CPC, so we've done about half of them, give or take, or at least opened them. So you can see the date they were discussed and the current status of each, in case you want to catch up. So if you want to come for that, we will also continue on Ordinance 129, which was a discussion about department heads and affiliated groups, friends of groups. So those two will be on Thursday. Next update I want to give you is our end of the month meeting. April has three council meetings. Due to a conflict, we will meet on Tuesday, the day right after council, instead of Thursday. It's already been noticed on the city website, no agenda yet to be determined, but just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that. And then last thing is that in the next packet, you'll have the budget schedule of hearings. Working to coordinate that now, and again, budget and CIP together this year, so look for some changes, nothing too monumental, but some adjustments. And that's it for budget. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Council Z. Community Services.
Nothing tonight to report out, however, I would like to give a committee report based upon our last meeting on April 4th. We had, visit us, Director Egmont from NYSS, and we talked about the Services and Support Division, which is not the rec program for those keeping score at home. What we talked about was the funding mechanisms that they go through. They currently have funding from the tower and BSCS, which is Bureau of Substance Abuse. They just got reinstated for that. It's roughly a little over $300,000 in terms of funding for the next couple of years. They try to take a positive approach to prevention in how they approach things. They have a lot of community support in trying to identify at-risk youth along the way. They are actually working with the schools. They're paying for the school curriculum on health and wellness. I think we should, you know, be alert that we should probably see a grant in the school side, that they'll be getting a grant from NYSS in terms of their health and wellness program. They, we, you have seen in the news recently, the Essex County Asset Builder Awards that they had passed out, that's part of this. It's a regional approach to things. They, they apply for the grants on a regional basis, and they spend the money on a regional basis as well. Currently Georgetown's getting about $20,000. Amesbury's getting significantly less. Trident gets zero, and we get some of that. From a budget impact, there were questions in the air that says, how does the grant money show up in the budget? And the answer is it doesn't, but they're working right now, they've been working over the last three years to evolve it to be a little bit more transparent in terms of that. That's a double-edged sword, because they get, if they, if they don't talk about it, then the budget looks very small, and it's a small conversation. But when they do talk about that and incorporate that as part of the grant money, then their breadth of services expands considerably, and it's probably a better conversation than not having a better conversation in terms of that. We may see things like them try to upgrade an administrator to an office manager and things like that. There's budget impacts on personnel that we should be aware of. Right now, some of the folks are funded by grants, and there's conversations afoot that may be moving some or a percentage of that under the city's budget as well. There was a question by a committee member that said, that asked straight up that if the Brown School gym were available, could they, would the NYSS use it as part of their programming? And the answer was yes. So we should make note of that as well. There were insights into collaboration they do with the YWCA. There was a collaboration that they did with the former mothers group that was there. They took over some of the programs that were associated with that. That mothers group is kind of dissolved and ran its course along the way. I think that was, I think that was it in general. It was good conversation, talking about those things that are focused on, as I said, the support division of NYSS. Thank you.
And great, and great, Council McCauley, it was a good conversation. Thank you for having it. So in General Government, motion to receive and file Communication 467. So this is the discussion we had, was on the Municipal Buildings Report. Molly Ettenberg came to discuss it. We thank Molly and Chief of Staff Labine for pulling this together. This is the first year they've put it together, so it's a good starting point, so for next years, we have something to compare to. Some good questions asked. One was, what's next based off this report? We do have a group of students from UMass who are in a building sciences group, who are going to be doing a green community course based off of the Newburyport report, so that's a, something we should be seeing sometime in the spring, I bel, sorry, in the summer, should be done. A few questions were asked about electricity, seasonal adjustment numbers for weather, and are we planning on doing any more solar? Molly was explaining that solar's probably not anything else, since we are already an aggregate community with some of the solar providers out in Western Mass. So good conversation, it's a good report. If folks haven't had a chance to take a good look at it, it was well done. The community voted 3 to 0 to receive and file it. Any questions? All right, roll call and receiving and filing.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunning?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
And Council Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
And motion to approve Application 126, the artist's shanties in the pop-up park.
Second.
Okay. So thank you very much. So a couple of highlights from our conversation with Director of the Firehouse. This is a one-time event that we're going to be approving, hopefully, the moving of the shanties onto the pop-up park area. And I'd like to make a reference to the late file that was referred to budget, I mean, to license and permits, speaking about how the shanties are going to be, are going to get there. And it's the, under the impression of the parks, the Firehouse Director, that the first use, the first paragraph there, the use of the forklifts, will be the way that we're going to be doing it. We had a considerable conversation, this came back the second time, to the license and permits, because we asked it the first time, how are you going to get them there? And there was conversation about cranes and whatnot. So this will be done early in the morning, in complete cooperation with any and everyone around that could possibly be affected by it, including, of course, checking in with the police and so on and so forth. So that's the manner in which they will be put in place and removed at the end of the season and placed on property that's by, owned by Newland Development. Again, this is a one-time event, just for this time, and hopefully we'll find a more permanent, or a permanent place for them next year. Again, this is a, we're going to support, this is a supporting effort that shows our support for the arts and cultural component of Newburyport, as you heard in public comment. Also, you can see that there was a conversation early on about where they have ended up now, and the concern about some, but there's some miscommunication about meetings and so on and so forth. We found in committee that all the information was straightforward, and we're looking forward to supporting the arts and culture of our community. I think, we think it came out of committee, as they say, 2 to 1, 2 in favor and 1 against. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer it. I urge you to vote in favor.
Questions? Council McCauley?
Yeah, I have some comments about this. So while I appreciate the review done by the committee, I'm of the opposite feeling of this. I'd like to move that we oppose the placement of this. The applicant is looking to place these shanties here, not on a one-time event, but for five solid months through the season. There are a number of reasons for this. The planned construction of Market Landing Park will be both on the east and the west side from the waterfront out. There's an application in right now for the Greater Newburyport Chamber of Commerce, which now will be, have to be altered if the shanties go in, because they actually will overlap where the areas are. Festivals like the Greater Newburyport Chamber, et cetera, Yankee Homecoming, et cetera, they need some space to run vendor events. That's how we get free festivals, because they sell spacing along the way. We had, over the last couple of years, we had built a corridor over in that section with food trucks in the front, being able to seat at the pop-up park along the way, and then be able to have vendor tents on the city's shoulder of the waterfront park, because the waterfront trust doesn't allow commercial activities within their borders along the way. So this is more than just a one-time event. The shanties themselves, when you measure them, they'll provide 56 linear feet of blockage of the road, of the view to the water. The whole park is 70 feet long, 56 feet of it at nine and a half feet, which is just about what you'd see from the building there. We spent a year and a half debating this in the Market Landing Park Committee about not putting anything that would block the water. While this may be for five months, it is the key five months, and it blocks views from Green Street Lot, Green Street, et cetera, along the way going forward. When we looked at this in December, we came back to, with a recommendation to the committee, to this council that voted 11 to 0, we found that they were safety hazards in many different ways. When you leave them unintended, there's no heat, no electricity, no working bathrooms. They have had trouble getting rid of them in terms of storage. The Parks Commission is not interested. They had them moved out of Tracy Place, because they tend to be, they tend to be sheds that are closed. They're closed 65% of the time, they're only open 35% of the time there along the way. The placement, the waterfront trust doesn't want them for the same reason, and the, and the custom house has just redone the lawn in the back, et cetera. So they have other events that are there going forward. The current placement that they have right now has forced the city to incur costs for these things. The National Grid project that was supposed to be downtown is using the city's parking lot as a staging area. They were supposed to use the grassy area where the, where the shanties are now. So we've lost maybe 10 or 12 spots for revenue for the last three months, and we'll continue to do so. Placement of these in the pop-up park isn't just a convenient method. It will take over 20% of the existing park today. And I, and, you know, the park is roughly 2,800 square feet, this is roughly 500 square feet or so, and you space them out accordingly. They're not, the park is not ADA compatible, the shanties are not ADA compatible, and in many ways, what's going to happen is, they're always going to be in the way. Because as we do more staging, and we do more of these, this construction, what's going to happen is that we're going to see these time and time again, that, oh, we had to work around this, oh, we had to work around this. And I'm just, as we look forward, even six months or a year, our plan that we've already approved from Suzuki does not have a place for structures of this sort in the park themselves. It's probably better that we cut ties now, or that's my opinion, and I would ask everyone to vote no on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McCauley. Further discussion? Council Vogel?
Thank you, Council President. I think that there's going to be a lot of disruption down at the waterfront area this coming season with all that's going on down there. Whether or not this is going to be a huge contributor to that congestion and to those perceived issues that are going to be coming along, I don't know. I do know that the Firehouse provides a tremendous amount of cultural. with food trucks in the front, being able to seat at the pop-up park along the way and then be able to have vendor tents on the city's shoulder of the waterfront park because the waterfront trust doesn't allow commercial activities within their borders along the way. So, this is more than just a one-time event. The shanties themselves, when you measure them, they'll provide fifty-six linear feet of blockage of the road, of the view to the water. The whole park is seventy feet long, fifty-six feet of it at nine and a half feet, which is just about what you'd see from the building there. We spent a year and a half debating this in the Market Landing Park Committee about not putting anything that would block the water. While this may be for five months, it is the key five months, and it blocks views from Green Street Lot, Green Street, et cetera, along the way going forward. When we looked at this in December, we came back to, with a recommendation to the committee, to this council that voted eleven to zero, we found that they were safety hazards in many different ways. When you leave them unattended, there's no heat, no electricity, no working bathrooms. They have had trouble getting rid of them in terms of storage. The parks commission is not interested. They had them moved out of Tracy Place because they tend to be, they tend to be sheds that are closed. They're closed sixty-five percent of the time, they're only open thirty-five percent of the time there along the way. The placement, the waterfront trust doesn't want them for the same reason, and the, and the custom house has just redone the lawn in the back, et cetera. So, they have other events that are there going forward. The current placement that they have right now has forced the city to incur costs for these things. The National Grid project that was supposed to be downtown is using the city's parking lot as a staging area. They were supposed to use the grassy area where the, where the shanties are now. So, we've lost maybe ten or twelve spots for revenue for the last three months, and will continue to do so. Placement of these in the pop-up park isn't just a convenient method. It will take over twenty percent of the existing park today. And, you know, the park is roughly twenty-eight hundred square feet, this is roughly five hundred square feet or so, and you space them out accordingly. They're not, the park is not ADA compatible, the shanties are not ADA compatible, and in many ways, what's going to happen is, they're always going to be in the way. Because as we do more staging and we do more of these, this construction, what's going to happen is that we're going to see these time and time again, that, oh, we had to work around this, oh, we had to work around this. And I'm just, as we look forward, even six months or a year, our plan that we've already approved from Suzuki does not have a place for structures of this sort in the park themselves. It's probably better that we cut ties now, or that's my opinion, and I would ask everyone to vote no on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Further discussion? Counsel Vogel?
Thank you, Counsel President. I think that there's going to be a lot of disruption down at the waterfront area this coming season with all that's going on down there. Whether or not this is going to be a huge contributor to that congestion and to those perceived issues that are going to be coming along, I don't know. I do know that the Firehouse provides a tremendous amount of cultural output, cultural recognition, artist recognition, and all that, what Newbury Port, in my opinion, stands for or should stand for. I believe that some of these obstacles, as was described by the counselor, are sort of just, we could find troubles with anything that we do. And in this particular case, we're asking for permission to put these shanties up, to support the artists, to support the Firehouse. The blocking of the views or the water and so on and so forth, all of that, when those trucks are down there during the Yankee Homecoming, the views are blocked as they are. When I say that this is a one-time event, I'm saying that this is a one-season event. They will be there for the entire length of time, and then hopefully, we'll find a permanent home for them. In fact, it would be nice if we focused on finding a permanent home for them, but we've seen for some reason, and I'm not sure exactly why, seems to be a bit of a grudge against the, against this organization and against this effort. So, I would encourage you to let it happen. That park as it is, in my particular opinion, if we're going to express opinions, I think that that pop-up park is not the most beautiful park that we have in the, in our, in our community, and I think that it would actually benefit by having a little bit of hubbub around it and have the artists step up and give them the opportunity. So, I encourage you to vote yes. I think that a yes vote is in favor of not only the Firehouse and all that it does, but is in favor of the whole cultural aspect of our community. So, again, appreciate your support.
Counsel President, I'd just like to respond. The Counsel at Large has inferred my intent that I actually have a grudge against this. I've gone out of my way to actually find homes for these, for these shanties over the last year or so during public safety. You know, we helped, we went out of our way to help them during COVID, moved them around, et cetera, along the way. I think it's, I think it's somewhat disrespectful to infer what my intent was on this. I'm coming at to this as a public safety issue. When we look at the programming that's there, there is no programming. It's ad hoc programming. As I said, sixty-five percent of the time, the shanties are closed and they're not accessible along the way. The only time there was a crowd is when we grouped them together with the indigenous celebration that was there, and it was actually a lively kind of event. But other than that, we have stragglers, we have one or two people along the way. So, saying that we're getting economic input or is disingenuous to say that we're getting support of the culture, of arts and the culture. We do a lot of that. There are other places, you know, I saw today a letter from the Arts Association, they could very easily host the shanties down on their property as well and try to take one or two of them along the way. This is an imposition on city assets at a time that I think the disruptions are real. They're not perceived. We will have construction going on down there, we will have abbreviated parking down there, and we will have crews that may be rambling all over the place. And to sacrifice one, to sacrifice three or four different events or festivals that we could be able to squeeze down there for five months of placement of these, I think is narrow-minded along the way. And that's, from my perspective, I have no grudge against the Firehouse.
Okay. So, no grudges? Thank you, Counsel Khan. I just saw that. Counsel Khan?
Thank you, Counsel President. Yeah, thank you. I guess I want to just share, as a member of the License and Permit Committee, that it was really helpful to get a little bit of history of the shanties. I do know that there were some issues in terms of removals, and I recognize that there may have been some pickups in placement, I believe, when initially they were put on the waterfront trust property back in 2019. But really, today, in terms of being able to take advantage of highlighting the arts in Newbury Port by providing an opportunity to the Firehouse to place the shanties in a location that can, for the time being, serve the use of them for the community, I don't see us actually falling into anything that could be hurting the community or the public safety of it. If one is to look at the graphic or the depiction of where the shanties are going to be located, one of the things that, you know, I was taking to heart was how will this impact things that we have going on in the city, like Yankee Homecoming, or any other types of events or festivals that we have in that area. So, the way the shanties will be situated is they won't be at all near the sidewalk, clearly, but they're actually going to be around kind of the perimeter of the pop-up park. And there's five of them, four by eight, or four of them, and then I believe the other ones are eight by twelve. In terms of also the visibility to the water, just even walking by there with some of the trees around there, as well as the cars parked, I don't see it really providing anything grossly, I guess, against the nature of what we want to try to accomplish there. But me, I've really resonated in supporting this, was the fact that Newbury Port, you know, in itself, has so many different local artists, and in talking with the Firehouse contact was that in their application process, you know, there's definitely some, you know, they will consider the application for Newbury Port or local artists to be featured, and that's such a need for our community. And so, for me, I think the two things that also, Yankee Homecoming, that's another one that's an amazing festival that goes on here, and I did just reach out to one of the, the person who's responsible for the vendors and setting up the vendors and talk to them about this, and they didn't see a problem with the location. And for them, it's mainly they want to make sure they have parking available, and this is not going to be obstructing any of the parking, but they also want to make sure that they could get their vendors where they, in other locations. And if you look at the map, you really can't get vendors on that sidewalk. So, for them, they don't see a problem with the way the shanties were distributed right now. So, I think given a couple of things, one is that the Firehouse is going to be looking for a permanent place for these shanties to go, and we have some ideas. This would be one way to get through the season, and I encourage everyone to support it, and let's see how this goes, and again, support the arts in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Khan. Further discussion? Counsel Wallace?
Thank you, President Shan. I will be supporting this. I do feel like it could be a benefit to the city and more of a trial run. If it's just one season, I don't really see the harm in seeing if that works. I do understand there will be construction and different things going on, but maybe that's, it'll be a good way to distraction the construction a little bit if, you know, if there are views that might be blocked, as the Counselor at Large said, if there's trucks and things anyway, you know, this might be a good summer to actually try it. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace. Further discussion? Counsel Cameron?
Thank you. Yeah, just to echo what the Ward Four Counsel said, I think, I think the benefits outweigh the, you know, possible negative externalities there. It is temporary, so we're not like signing a five-year, ten-year lease, you know, and I think the city should, you know, should be supportive of local artists and certainly institutions like the Firehouse. I don't, you know, and maybe we're a part of a future, longer-term solution for these shanties, but that's really on the Firehouse and the folks doing that. I, you know, I don't, I don't know why these have been so controversial, but they have been, and, but I think this, you know, as a temporary idea, that, that's, that spot, you know, between cornhole and other things, that spot's been controversial as well, but I think this would be fine, and hopefully, those disruptions would be minimal. If this was in other locations in the waterfront park, I think I'd have a problem with it, but I think that's, that's going to be okay.
Thank you, Counsel Cameron. Further discussion? Counsel Z.
Thank you. So, I've been, I was on when these first happened, and I really do actually understand why they are controversial. I mean, it's this controversial, in some ways, is building on the waterfront, you know, structures on the waterfront have a long history of controversy, and so there is a reason why there's a lot of emotion around putting any sort of thing, and the word temporary is a famous word in government, actually, because it doesn't always work out that way. And then the, the way the shanties were handled previously was left much to be desired, both in terms of their placement and their storage and some of the concerns. I guess a couple of thoughts. One is, you know, I definitely struggle with it. I think, I'm not convinced it, it's, it's a lot of the same arguments with Yankee Homecoming discussions. Does it help local businesses? Does it hurt them? You know, we have a lot of shops that are basically dedicated to selling art or things made by local artisans and so forth. So, when you encourage people to go somewhere else, and essentially you're subsidizing the rent, which is effectively what we're doing here, you're creating a little bit of a perversion in the market. You're changing how things work because you have some storefronts dealing with very high rents, for example, which we know is a perennial concern, conversation, and then you're sort of having this other space. The difference, I think, is Yankee Homecoming and other events come and go very quickly, like they're here for a day or even a week. This is a sustained period. I mean, effectively, you're setting up a competition for a period of the entire season, five months. And so, and it's different than, say, parklets, because parklets are run by the restaurants that are, so these are just how I kind of frame the thoughts in my head, is how do you think about it? So, I'm not convinced on that it is actually helpful, I'm not convinced that it isn't either, I'm just saying it's a valid concern, in my opinion, especially because the city is sort of artificially participating in the market in that case. So, that's the first conversation. The second one is, I definitely think we need to be cognizant, when things become a construction site, it's just a whole different world, you know? Trucks go, any board counselor that's had construction knows that things never go the way you think they're going to go, and all of a sudden, something becomes lay-down space that you never expected in the first place, and they come in and dump pipe somewhere and say, oh, this will be here for a week, and then it's there for three months, and it's just always in flux. So, I kind of look at that area as, you know, to be determined in a lot of ways, and I don't think we should discount that, because there's a lot of drainage that's going into this project, there's other things, they're going to dump stuff and equipment all over the place, and we definitely don't want to put people anywhere near where, you know, would be negligent, in my opinion, put them in a place where they're in harm's way. So, that's the second concern. Third one is, and I don't mean to open a can of worms, but, you know, our charter is specific that we can't do a franchise without doing an ordinance, and to me, this really is close, and I think you could argue on either side of the coin whether this acts as, you, essentially, you could be, you could construe this as essentially almost a land transaction in some ways, more so than an event. So, I mean, I think that's deep in the law, you know? You might argue, what's an event? Is it different between four hours and five hours? Is it different between four months and five months? But I would just say that that's something we need to be, if we're going for a permanent solution in the future. So, the final thing is, I guess to try and make it a little palatable for myself, I'm wondering if there's a couple of conditions on this that might be acceptable. Number one is, the ability for the council to call back in the approval on, say, a four-week notice. So, let's just say it's not going well, and the construction has gotten out of control, and we're just not able to, that we could let them know, and at least give them a month's notice, so not pull the rug out in a day and just say, but because we're going all the way till October, we just heard bids are due the 26th, it could be that construction doesn't start until next spring. Then it's not a concern. It could be that it starts in three weeks, because the contractor's like, we want to go, we got another project to do. And the second one is just to place a condition that, you know, it is approved with the understanding that this is meant to only be for the 2023 season. And I'm being very careful, I'm not saying it must be, I'm not trying to bind a future council, I'm just saying at least if we impute the intent into there explicitly, it may make some counselors feel that there's an, because last year, I thought we had this conversation, but, but we didn't or we couldn't, and I hate to be the bearer of further bad news, it's going to be very hard to find a permanent place for these. I mean, those of us who served on the waterfront ad hoc know that they're not making new land, so we had Patrick Tracy Square, then we went down here. So, those are my two offers, I'll make those as a formal amendment, and those are just conditions on the approval. And then, I'll yield with that for the moment, just one other question, but I'll wait on that.
Thank you, Counsel Z.
I'll second the amendment for discussion.
Best emotional amendment, two conditions.
Please. And I'll second that for discussion.
Thank you.
Discussion. Counsel Vogel?
Thank you. So, the, in terms of the length of time, the application specifically says through October 22nd, 2023, so I'm not certain that we need to highlight that in any other way because that's specifically the date of the event, as it is on the application. And then, secondly, the, we did have the conversation with the planning director, and we're clearly under the impression that this is not going to get in the way of any type of construction down there. So, we did have that conversation. I'm not particularly concerned with the, with the, with the language, other than I would really like to ask the Firehouse, you know, what four weeks' notice does for them, and if that's allowable by the President.
Mr. Moynihan?
John, if you could speak to that, that would be great. Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you for the lively debate of your treatment. And thank you, Counsel Z, for your considerations. Is it impossible? No? Would it make things difficult? And I think we spoke with this Counsel Z a couple of years ago, when we were talking about doing the, the shows in waterfront park, and just how difficult it can be, you know, kind of take things up and move them around and a, and the expense behind it. So, would I say that it is, that it is impossible? No. Would I say that it is, would be, would probably create a financial burden? Likely.
All right.
Just a follow-up of, I may, thank you, Counsel President. The concern that I would have about that particular stipulation is, is what is the criteria? You know, what, what is not working? What, what, what would, what would cause us to say, you've got a month's notice?
Yeah, I think Mr. Moynihan, for his memory, trying to find an elegant solution the last time around and trying to find one again tonight, you know, to the at-large Counselor's question, it's the, it's the old, same old, it's whatever six people think is not working, and so I know that that's not comforting necessarily, but just in the same case that somebody's here tonight to make the case that it will work, and really, at the end of the day, none of us know whether it will or it won't, it's the same thing. I do think, just, and I'll say it happily on the floor here, do I envision that being called in? I don't, unless there's, you know, something really of severity out there, like they roll in and the contractor says, you know, we didn't anticipate this, and you've got people milling about here. I'm just getting done, as you heard, with the dredge project, you know, people on the beach, problems. So, that would be the case. I really don't envision it being called, but I think it's, it's within our right and it's responsible to leave the option for us, and again, not to inconvenience, but we did do something similar on the East Lot with the stage a couple of years ago, and we didn't end up with that scenario, fortunately, and we didn't have to deal with it. So, I think this is a similar sort of thing. And just for the record, in a sense, you know, the council can always undo an order of its own with six votes, you can, it's sort of how orders work, and an application's a form of an order, but I think this just puts everybody on notice that, hey, you know, there's, there's some questions here that we, we just don't know. We don't know if construction will even start this season, so it gives us a little bit of relief if we need it.
Thank you, Counsel Z. Further discussion? All right. Roll, Counsel Lane?
So, I'll vote on the motion.
No, hang on. Counsel Lane has his hand up.
I just be, I'm with dissent, the dissent in vote on license and permits, and I just feel it's a bad location. That's just my take. I have no grudge, or I have no personal beef with any artists or shanties in the city. I just don't think it's a good location. Clearly, there seems to be an appetite for it. I'm still going to be voting no. I would really implore people to be sensitive to the fact that Yankee Homecoming is kind of, at this point, threatened, but is consensus to pull the other thing, so I don't want to see anybody get crushed on Yankee Homecoming, but I would implore you to keep that in mind with these shanties in the future. So, with that, I'll yield.
Thank you, Counsel Lane. All right. Roll call. On the amendments.
If you mind.
Yeah, thank you.
So, the motion amendment, as I see it, has two conditions. One is that it be a condition that the council may revoke with one month's notice. The second is that, the condition is that it's only for the 2023 season.
Fair. Roll call.
Roll call.
Counsel Lane?
No.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
So, the motion on the floor is to approve as amended.
Counsel Z.
I just have one other question, and that was related to electricity. So, it states that electricity is not included but could be included. Did that come up in conversation at all in terms of, I'm assuming they withdraw from the city? Where else would they get the power from? So, I don't know if the city, you know, if you were running eight hours a day, times five shanties, times several months.
Question for Mr. Moynihan?
Through the chair or through the chair?
I'm happy to have you explain it, please.
We do put in the applications that electricity, if it's available, has been available. The city has allowed us to do it. Maybe once every couple of weeks, there'll be one artist that elects to do it. However, in speaking with Director Port, he had mentioned that there may not even be electricity on those in the pop-up park during the construction phase. So we are happy to remove that from any sort of application that goes out to the artists and the call artists, so there will be no expectation of electricity provided.
Okay. Thank you. I'm all set. Thank you very much.
All right. So roll call.
So roll call on the approval as amended. Counsel Lane.
No.
Counsel McCauley.
No.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
I vote of nine to two. The motion as amended passes.
Nothing further.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Kim, I'm planning and development.
Thank you.
Thank you, President. Nothing coming out of committee, although I'm going to beg your favor in a second. Just a couple of logistical calendar updates. On Wednesday, the 19th, we have the joint hearing with the planning board on short-term rental that is posted as a committee of the whole, 7:00 at Senior Community Center. And we do have a hold date for the following night, April 20th, at 6:00 p.m., and I will be arm wrestling the President later, and I may let her win. What I want to ask the council, if they would, when we refer the communication on the retail sale of marijuana, I thought it was a committee of the whole, and that's what my notes said, but when the clerk went back and rolled the tape, that was referred to planning and development. I think, no matter where you stand on it or wherever you're going to vote on it, I think it would be good to have it as a committee of the whole. So I'd be willing to... I think the proper procedure would be to remove it from committee and put it back to committee.
Remove, remove, and place it back committee of the whole.
Yeah. And that would just give people an opportunity to speak at the committee meeting when we do have it. And then, again, the whole thing would come back to the full council, obviously. So...
As he motions.
I'd like to do as the clerk said.
Second.
All right. Discussion. Roll call.
This is on waiving the rules, removing and placing Communication 469. Right?
Yep.
Correct.
Back as committee of the whole to planning and development. Counsel Lane.
Present.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z. No. Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Further discussion? I mean, sorry, anything else? Counsel Cameron?
We'll all advise on scheduling of these other matters.
Okay. Counsel Wallace, Public Works and Safety.
I am going to begin by allowing Counsel McCauley to do one of the items that I need to recuse on. I'll just step out.
McCauley.
Thank you, Counsel President. On a meeting of Public Works and Safety, we had the opportunity to have a conversation with Wayne Amal, so motion to approve Appointment 388.
Second.
Thank you. So at the time, Mr. Amal came, he was present. He talked about his resume and his history and his background, in addition to being here previously. He learned highway and water and sewer while he was here. He had a crash course in snow and sewer removal in 2015, when we had all that snow. He's worked in Cambridge in sidewalks, tree repair and crew, separate tree, 20-year traffic engineer, roadway, traffic calming, et cetera, along the way. We talked about, in addition to that, he brings a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge back to the business, and he wants to balance the department needs with the broader needs of the citizens going forward. When asked what his toughest policy, what his toughest first step will be, it's trying to align policy, the vision and the future with the daily operation that's going on. He sees that's been askew for a little bit. He sees that we've been a little bit more reactive than we have been proactive in trying to get that back in balance. On an operational level, he wants to bring focus back to the department. He seems there's been a little bit of lack of focus, a little drama, stuff like that. And it's basically because, as he sees it, there's a lack of communication up and down through the organization. Folks have good ideas, they're not being heard along the way. He thinks that he can come in with his credibility and experience and background and offer some stability to that department, and we, as a committee, voted two to zero to approve that.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Further questions or comments? All right. Roll call.
Roll call on Appointment 388, Wayne Amal. Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace, for the record, has recused. Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
A jury's yes.
Thank you. Counsel Khan.
Yes.
And Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Counsel Wallace, welcome back.
Let's see. Motion to approve Appointment 387, Tom O'Brien to the Water and Sewer Commission.
Second.
All right. Tom O'Brien came in to our committee. Good to see him. He... Many of us know him or even were on the council with him. He was on the council from 1997 to 2019, so 22 years, 10 of which he was the council president. And before he was on the council, he was on the Water and Sewer Commission from 1993 to 1998 under Mayor Matthews. So he has a little bit of experience that he's bringing to the table. He said he really enjoyed his days on the Water and Sewer Commission, and he really got to know the crews and how they operate, would even like go visit them in the field and see what they do and understand, you know, so when he takes his votes, he could understand the process. And he's looking forward to getting involved again, advocating for the residents, and, you know, is willing to help out in any way that he can. And committee approved three zero.
Thank you. Discussion. Counsel Vogel.
Thank you, Counsel President. With all due respect to the service of former Counsel O'Brien and all of his contributions to the community, I'm going to vote no on his appointment to this committee. I think currently there are individuals out there that have more current knowledge and more current understanding, and those... I think that I know of one that was bypassed in favor of this. So for those reasons alone, the fact that there is at least one person out there with more current information and more of an approach that is based now as opposed to the past, I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Vogel. Further comments? Counsel Wallace.
Thank you. Just to follow up, I will say, too, that there was one individual that was not reappointed, and that individual would be also qualified. And it would have been nice to get maybe some information from the mayor on why that person was... I guess I could speak with him. But I'm not using that in my vote for Mr. O'Brien because I think he's qualified as well, and those decisions are up to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace. Further discussions? Counsel Cameron.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, that would be interesting to know about that other... That reappointment. I wasn't aware of that. Yeah, just on the merits, you know, for former President O'Brien, I'm a strong supporter. I know he... And we weren't always on the same page on this with different interpretations, but, you know, clearly, we'll have an eye out for the rate payers, and I think that's really important. He is somebody who will... He's going to vote the way he's going to vote, and sometimes you love that, and sometimes you don't love it. But I think that's always a good mix to have in any board or commission, especially one... I mean, this is one of the more important ones, I would say, especially with the size of those, you know, those enterprise accounts. So I think it's a big deal. His past experience before he was on the council, I think is helpful, and his time on the council is good as well. So I'm going to vote in favor.
Counsel Cameron. Counsel Z.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just say ditto to the at-large Counselor's points. I think he's been on the committee before, and anybody who knows him knows he has strong opinions about the Plum Island Water and Sewer System, specifically, as many of us now do as well. So I'm happy to support him and welcome him back to the fold. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Z. Further comments, discussion? Seeing no hands. Roll call.
So roll call on the appointment of Tom O'Brien, Appointment Water and Sewer. Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
No.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Ten one. Motion passes.
All right. I'm going to go a little bit out of order here, but since we're on the topic of water and sewer, motion to approve Ordinance 143, amendments to change the water service fees.
Second.
All right. So this was sponsored by myself, just as the chair. It was asked of me to help out here, and I had no issues with that. The rate increases here for the water service fees were approved by the Water and Sewer Commission this past winter, and they voted apparently unanimously on the increases. Environmental Partners had done a study on the rate increases and where the city might have been lacking, and they made some recommendations. So these reflect part of those recommendations. One in particular, and I remember being on the Public Utilities Committee a couple of years ago, and this came up, was the tapping fees... Oh, I forget what they call it. They call it the...
New service connections.
System... The per-house, well, the system development fee. So before, if you tapped a line and you had a multifamily home, multifamily building, developer only had to pay for that one tap. But in many other communities, they pay per unit. So, for instance, at Boston Way, I think someone said there are 70 units there, at $2,500, that would have been a lot of extra money for, you know, the city to have. So I think that's pretty consistent with other communities. And then the other, you know, increases, because I asked about, you know, how would the average single-family home be affected? And not incredibly, because the one to two inches are typically the service connections or those are the sizes that the single-family homes tap into. The four and the six inches are a little bit larger, and those are usually for the bigger development. So those are the ones that went up by like a few thousand dollars. So I think that summarizes it pretty well. The committee voted it three zero. Thank you.
Counsel Z.
I just have a couple of questions to make sure I understand. So I didn't understand the part about the multiple units. So this says a one inch is 2,500, that's unchanged, two inches now 5K, four inches 10K. Are you saying that... Where does it talk about per unit? And then one other question before I sit down is just, the hydrant charge is $400, and then there's hydrant charge Newbury, which goes to 150. Why wouldn't they be the same? Or why wouldn't the not-Newburyport one be the higher one, I guess, would be the two questions.
Counsel... I can answer one of those questions. And I don't know if there's somebody else from the city here. This came up in the committee as well. There's a memo after the rates, so perhaps that's missing from the table there. And the memo describes the system development fee new at 2,500 per housing unit for multifamily units. So that could be just a Scrivener's error, or maybe there's a page missing. I'm not sure.
It's in the... It's just not on the ordinance, though. Unless I'm missing it. If that's the intent, it probably should be somewhere in there.
It should be in the ordinance. Correct. I agree. As far as the hydrant increases, I don't know the answer to that, but I don't know if there's somebody from...
There isn't.
...water or...
I do not see anybody that can answer that question, or no one willing to raise their hand right now.
I'm going to put it back in committee.
Is there a need to get this proved tonight?
I don't know.
Do you want to keep it in committee and get some questions answered?
No. I mean, I think that's... Well, maybe we'll see if there's any other questions. I don't know exactly why the Newbury one would be more expensive, but it could just be because it's not Newburyport, and it's something they feel they could get. I don't know if there's any additional costs or work that goes into that, which might be part of the case.
Okay. Are there other questions besides Counsel Z's? Counsel Preston.
Just how are we going to address getting the rest of this memo into the ordinance? Sounds like we would need to at least amend it. Sounds like we would need to at least amend it.
I, I would just say, motion to amend, you should add the system development fee, what's in the box in the memo should be added to the ordinance. Except, I think instead of, I don't know, the, the term "system development fee" doesn't exist in the ordinance, so I think you wanna call it meter connection, what do they call New service connection fee. That would at least be consistent.
Can I just, sorry?
Certainly.
Where can I find this memo you guys are talking about?
It's right after.
At the bottom of it.
In the packet?
In the packet, took on.
There you go.
I think, I think that, that piece was mistakenly left off. So yes, I think just...
Or insert that, that row.
The new development section.
So maybe, yeah.
Is that an amendment? Are you...
Yeah, I just say, motion to amend to insert that row. Because I think that's, that will take care of both at the same time.
Okay. Discussion on the amendment. All right, why don't we take the roll call on the amendment of the insertion?
To add that language as said. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
So the language has been amended. The motion includes amendment.
Counselor Vogel?
Just, just a quick, just, just a...
I'm sorry.
A moment here. I, I, I'm gonna go ahead and support this, but I, I wish that we could maybe come to an understanding exactly as to why the, the questions raised by the one counselor are sound questions, and it'd be nice to get those answers. I'll, I'll go ahead and support it, but certainly would be nice to know.
Counsel Wallace? Sorry. Counselor...
Go ahead, she can respond.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I can, if it does move forward, I can follow up with somebody from the staff and send that information around.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Counselor Wright?
My, my preference would be for this to go back to committee.
Remind you.
It's a significant fee, has a significant impact. It's a fee that will be charged to developers. It's a fee that will be passed on to homeowners, and it will have a significant impact on, on what developers can do in the city. And to, to not have that, not have that discussed, they may think, to bring it to the floor tonight, I think is irresponsible. And perhaps it may be best to send this back to committee, that we might recommend that.
Further discussion? Counselor McCauley?
Yeah. In terms of the system development and the new development tap fee, we did discuss it in the committee, and we had representation there. That is what the growing rate is now for surrounding communities. The communities are, it's a, it's comparable to our new development fee of $2,500 if you were a single-family home. But if you were a multifamily home, you're charged one $2,500 fee. And the consensus, again, with the surrounding communities, it's $2,500 per unit that's there. So if you have a three-family, it's $7,500. If, you know, you have 1,000 units, it's, you know, times this as well. And that's what's going on here. And those fees are used to subsidize the construction costs that we incur. On top of that, it also goes to helping with the original build-out, as well as the fixed costs associated with the building itself. So we did talk about that, and these are not out of line with other communities. The only thing we didn't discuss was the hydrant fee, which was raised. And, and part of that is, Newbury gets a, a veto on the rate of what they were charged their town people as well. So particular to that, because that's a Newbury kind of thing, so.
Further discussion? Counselor Zede?
So I, I, I think that, first of all, I think that the system development fee is material for large projects, right? Let's be clear about what we're talking about. We're talking about Boston Ways, but from what I remember, and it's been a couple of years now since I was on Public Utilities, but, you know, there were concerns about, say, a waterfront west side, that scale development, where you're talking about, you know, units that are measured in three digits, let's say. That $2,500 to connect the whole development just seemed really low. Where I'm having a disconnect personally is just, we hear a lot about tech reviews and mitigations being requisite with projects, and so, in other words, developers are supposed to pay, you know, we, we've had this conversation a lot, mitigations versus public benefit. Those are two different buckets when the development gets done. So I think where the disconnect for me is, you know, if there are costs that are being incurred, they, they should be covered. That's the whole idea behind that, and that's always been a bit of a gray area that I could probably stand to learn more about, and maybe others would join me in having to learn more about that. But that should be covered. And then the other thing, and then this is a broad comment, is that we've been really, I've been, I should say "I," so I don't, I don't impute anybody else, but I have been very troubled by, I don't see a broad, I don't have a broad financial understanding of water and sewer right now. I know that they're staring down the barrel of a tremendous amount of projects that they either need to do or want to do, and even the wants are borderline needs. We talk about the water supply all the time. Then we have the flip side of that conversation, which is what can be absorbed by rate payers at once. And, you know, we've been talking about for at least three years that I can remember how this Environmental Partners, or somebody was supposed to help us package this all up in a way that it almost looked like a budget for five years, where you'd say, okay, we expect to have to take on $50 million of new debt. And by the way, the city carries about $100 million of debt, give or take altogether. A good chunk of that is water and sewer. I mean, better than half, I think, if memory serves. And they're talking about needing to potentially double, I think, that amount of debt over a period of time. So, and then we have communications about PFAS and other things. So I just have all these things swimming around, and I keep getting little glimpses into it, and it'd be nice to get a picture from 30,000 feet that says, this is the rate curve, this is what it needs to look like, this is what residents should expect, because as we know, rates are financial and political. So I mean, there are questions on them on both ends. So I kinda came in planning to vote against this. If it votes tonight, I will support it, but I think that we just, that needs to get some clarity on where this thing is going. Thank you.
Counselor Zede. Counselor Wallace?
Yeah. I'm just, I'm thinking this through. I, I don't disagree with Counselor Zede, and, and I, I don't want this to come back into committee, but we are, we did have the, the whole water department and Water and Sewer Commission come in a few weeks ago, and we had a great discussion about PFAS and the water system as a whole. And now that I think about it, it would be nice to see this study, or kind of an overview. I, I, but I, you know, I'm just, I, I probably should've confirmed that somebody from the city was gonna be here, but usually they are. So I don't, I could, I could go either way, but, you know, I, we could do, approve it, and then I could follow up with additional information, and then if, if there's an issue with anybody, we could bring something back.
How about a motion to continue to April 24th?
Yeah, okay.
So it doesn't go back, but you get, you get your two weeks.
Perfect.
Somebody can come in and that doesn't know.
Everybody's happy, or kind of happy.
There you go. Good compromise. All right, I believe we need to vote on that. Is there further discussion? Assuming not.
It's motion to continue to a date certain, April 24th.
24th, I believe, is our next council meeting.
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
All right. That was a good solution. All right. Last but not least, motion to receive and file communication 465, the Streets Paving Plan.
Second.
All right. We may have a similar issue with this, if there's no other staff here, but I, I will do the best I can here. So our committee actually voted to send this out without a recommendation, and we determined we would discuss it more on the floor here. But it came out three, three-zero, because I think we're ready to discuss it. Let's see, we had Chief of Staff Levine at, at all the meetings. We had John Eric White come to one of the meetings. And then at the last meeting, we had Jen Sullivan called in to help answer questions. So basically, what we have in our packet is the updated paving plan, it's called. I've, have seen it in the past, called the Streets and Sidewalks Plan, but it, it really is more of a paving plan. Last year, they did work in wards one, three, and five. This year, they've done work, or this year, they're doing work in wards two, four, and six. And right now, they're working on Plummer Avenue, and they're moving right along on that, and that's a full sidewalk, full reconstruction with granite curbing. The question came up, like, will there be a schedule for the, the rest of the summer? Not exact, but general. They said they could do one of those, and they would post it on their, their webpage. I haven't seen it yet. And we also talked about sidewalks, and there's still some decisions of what types of sidewalks, and if sidewalks will even be put for some of these. For example, Willow Ave in Ward Four, they want to propose asphalt. I'm not as warm to that, and so that hasn't been decided, and we're waiting on a sketch from that. I know it was Fair Street in Ward Two, they are planning not to do a sidewalk, which was another question that came up. So there's, there's still some things that need to be answered, I think, but to be fair, I understand that they are down a DPS director and a, and a deputy DPS director. And so just real quickly, this year, Ward Two is gonna be Fair, Fruit, and Middle, or parts thereof. Ward Four is Plummer right now, Willow, Christopher, and Arlington, although apparently the sidewalks in Arlington may happen next year. And Ward Six, it's listed as Noble, Peters Hoyt, Spring, Longfellow, and Curzon's Mill. And then it's got, you know, the following years as well. So as far as processed, I think our goal is to receive and file it, if we so choose. That's what we did last year. But I believe by receiving and filing it, or that was part of the condition to release the second year of the money, was to get this plan and, and get it through the council. So I know that they're anxiously waiting to get started. And I have some further comments about Ward Four, but I'll yield for now and open it up. Thank you.
Counselor Wright?
Could you just, for the record, inform people what the petition process is to have their streets added?
Counselor Shan, do my little thing if there's anybody else.
I do see a hand that's up. Andrew Levine.
Yay.
Andrew, you're allowed to speak.
Good evening, everybody. It's so strange not to be there. Sorry to listen tonight.
Did you hear the question, Andrew?
So the question is around the petition process. Absolutely happy to talk about that. So we have a petition process that's open right now, but what we ask for is that petitions be sent in to the Department of Public Services and to the mayor's office. Those should come from at least five people on a street, or every street that doesn't have five people living on it, half the residents on a street. And then those are reviewed, those are, we walk the sites to, to see, review the data to see if it makes sense to move the streets that are sent in up the plan. We've not received any yet so far this cycle for streets that are, are being done in this year at the moment. We have some that, that we can make some changes to for wards one, three, and five, but for wards two, four, and six, at the moment, there's a lot of work that was done last year with petitions. In fact, Willow and Plummer were both not scheduled to be this year, but we're on the petition process last year, and it's very important to move those up. There's a lot, a lot of desire to see those roads attended to. So that's petition process, and last year, we had a couple of meetings to talk through the results of petitions. We'll plan to do that again, but so far, we haven't gotten any roads we're planning to attend to right now, so we can, we can do that a little later, as we talk about the plans for the evolution of the plan for next year.
If I may, Director Levine, the petitions that were put in last year, they need to be reinstated, or you have to go back and get those petitions done again? Because I know, I'm pretty sure I put a few in for Ward Three, and I know they weren't done last year, so do the residents need to do a petition again?
We have those. If for any reason residents don't see those streets on the results list that, that I'll post again, just so people can see it, they're welcome to reach out and make sure that, that there aren't any issues with their application. Folks don't need to apply again, because you have your data, but if they would like to, to reach out, we'd be happy to reevaluate, especially if anything new that's happened on the street, if, if there's been a particular damage in the last year or anything else, we're happy to, to look at that again.
Okay. Other questions? Counselor Wallace?
Sure. So just to kind of hit on my, my specific Ward Four comments. So within the streets plan itself, and, and this is what I also mentioned in the committee meeting, you know, there are, there's a few unknowns, the sidewalk types, and Arlington is getting pushed out to next year, which, that, that's fine. But the, the big thing is, when you're looking at Ward Four, Ward Four is, is kind of unique in that it's got, you know, all of Merrimack Street, well, not all, a lot of Merrimack Street, High Street, and then it's got those wide cut-through streets. And proportionally, the conditions of the streets in Ward Four are worse than elsewhere in the city. So we have a lot of streets with very low ratings that aren't getting touched at all in the next five years, whereas in other wards, they're getting done. So I, I'm not in favor necessarily of the Ward approach. I, I understand it, but at the same time, sometimes it just doesn't make sense to me. So as I mentioned before, I'm gonna put together some, like a memo or correspondence with more specific concerns that I have, and send that to the administration, and, and that way, the residents could also see that. And then the other thing that I brought up is, my concerns are what is, are not on the plan, such as traffic safety projects. So we have a dire safety situation on Merrimack Street that we designated in front of the park a safety zone, and I do not believe there's any committed funding or staff resources for this plan. I mean, I know the staff has worked on a little bit, but I just want to reiterate, that has to be a priority. And I understand that's a different list, but when we're looking at how we're spending our money, safety of children, waiting for buses to go to school or at the park, it has to come first. So I just, I needed to put that in. And also, we have issues on High Street, Mosley Ave needs a sidewalk, Rossin for kids getting to school, other areas of kids getting to schools too, at the Brezhnev Hand and such. So I'll put those in a list, but I really think, you know, the Streets and Sidewalks Plan is, is great, and this is something we've all wanted for a long time. But now I think it's time to take the next step and start looking at our traffic safety projects, because they're all kind of out there. There's some in planning, there's some in DPS, there's some grants out there, but we don't know about them. And it would be nice to have a plan, and then, and understand and be transparent about what grants we're applying for, because sometimes we'll get a grant, and that's great, but then, but what about over here, where the kids, you know, can get hit by cars? So I think that could be a next step for the administration, is to look at those projects as well, and the next DPS director. So, you know, so it's hard for me to, I know we're not approving this plan, but I'm gonna get the questions, like, why is this much money going to this, but yet, you know, it's not safe out here for kids? But I think what would make me feel better is, you know, receiving and filing it, but perhaps conditioning it on submitting, you know, receiving and filing it, so they can get their work, get their work started. But we do have a new DPS director coming in, and he will have to look at it, and, you know, things could change. He can, he's gonna be looking at allocating resources. We will be through budget season. I just think another look at the plan, maybe at the end of the fiscal year. So I, I'm not gonna make the motion yet, I'm just gonna throw it out there, but to submit an updated plan by June 30th, and then also submit a plan for traffic safety projects. So those are two of the conditions out there, also by June 30th, just to get us started in that process. So I yield. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Zede?
Yeah, sorry. I just want to say a couple of things. One is, it, it is a hu, like, this is, this is very positive to me in the sense that I've been fighting for so long to do this, some of this stuff, and it's imperfect, and it's messy, like everything is, but, you know, we finally have something that sort of says where, where we might be going, even if it, again, it's imperfect. And I, I just, I think that that's very positive. I, I still, I do agree that we, we'd love to, now, I'd love to evolve it, and I, I agree that having the, the, having a DPS director officially as of an hour ago now is the next step in that process. So I think the positives here are that this came in in February, that, that's light years ahead of when we ever had it. We still probably need a little bit more time earlier, but that, that's a great start. A second really positive thing is that with ARPA and the mayor's support, we had, we actually have money for this year over and above our Chapter 90. Huge win for, for many of us who've been fighting for roads. I do want to caution that we have to have that fight again for next year, because we approved two years, and this is two of two. So we've gotta have that conversation, because I think the takeaway is very clear. If we drop back to the 550,000 or so that we get, we are back in the hole, and we, we're not even keep treading water at that rate. So that's a debate that I think is coming up, maybe during the CIP conversation a little bit, maybe elsewhere. And then last is to just, yeah, keep, keep working with the new DPS head in conjunction with the mayor, and just see what, what are the next things we can do to make this plan even better, create more expectation for residents. Sidewalks are, are always a big, a big thing, but I'm excited to, to keep the process going and just look at everything sort of evolutionary and seeing, seeing it move forward.
Thank you, Counselor Zede. Further discussion? All right. The motion on the floor is to receive and file?
Correct.
Correct.
Counselor Wallace?
All right. I will make a motion to receive and file with the conditions that an updated plan be submitted by June 30th, and that, how about just a list of traffic safety projects also be submitted?
By June 30th.
By June 30th.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none? Roll call.
It's a roll call on the amendment with two conditions. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z? Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Now we have a motion to receive and file with two conditions.
You have a hand up over there. I think that's old.
Andrew Levine's. Discussion? All right, roll call.
Motion to receive and file as amended. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Eleven zip, motion passes as amended. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Counsel Wallace?
Nothing further.
All right. Good of the order. Counselor Zede, then Counsel Donahue.
I just, I forgot, I wanted to just, one other thought on the budget schedule, so I will make every effort to circulate it to chairs in the next week or so, because unfortunately, I'm going to have to step on some nights that we usually don't go. Historically, we've done Wednesday and Thursday nights, and last year, I staggered them over a period of time to keep the burnout less, but it's like anything else, there's pros and cons. We could do three nights a week for fewer weeks, we can do two nights a week for more, but unfortunately, we'll be hitting possibly Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. So I'll do my best, and we usually start it, go from 6 to 8, if chairs have any suggestions. I mean, I don't really want to do 7 to 9 to allow an hour before, so any thoughts are welcome, any suggestions. I just want to try and stay out of folks' way as much as I can, understand that we unfortunately have a lot of work we have to get done, so.
It is budget season.
It is.
Counsel Donahue, thank you, Counselor Zede.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This is just very lighthearted. I am part Polish, so I just wanted to wish you all a Happy Dingers' Day.
Thank you.
Didn't even know it.
I'm sure we'll figure out what that is later on.
Polish Easter.
Got it. All right, anything else?